Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the first policy committee meeting of the new school year on Tuesday, September the 10th, 2024. We have a few housekeeping items before we begin. A reminder that this meeting is being recorded on Teams and the recording will be posted on HCDSP's website. Please, everyone, take a minute, if you haven't already, to mute your laptops. And please use the boardroom microphones when it's your turn to speak. Much easier for the people that are listening to the recording to hear. And if participating by Teams, which we don't have anyone, keep your microphone muted and camera off when not speaking. Please use the raise hand function in Teams when you would like to speak. At this time, I kindly request that the land acknowledgement be played.
Holton, as we know it today...
Is rich in the history and modern traditions...
...of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe...
To the Atawandran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround me greatly.
Our steeped and indigenous history.
As we gather today...
On these treaty lands...
Our Catholic social teachings...
Call us in solidarity...
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank...
The Mrs. Saugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Let us begin our meeting tonight with an opening prayer by trustee Agnew.
Thank you if you'll join me in the Son of our faith, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. We pray for open hearts and minds to receive your plans and purposes. May we be sensitive to your leading and obedient to your will. We pray that you would open our eyes to see your hands at work in every aspect of this meeting this evening. May your spirit guide us in making wise decisions and lead us toward the best outcomes. Amen, Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you very much, trustee Agnew. So let's start. We will move to item number two, which is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, may I please have a mover to approve? Trustee Duarte? May I please have a seconder? Trustee Saunders? All in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we're going to item number three, which is declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to item number four, which is delegations. We do not have any delegations this evening. Continue to move on to item number five, which is approval of the minutes. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes of the June 11th, 2024 policy committee meeting? Seeing none, may I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 11th, 2024 policy committee meeting? May I please have a mover? Trustee Carabella? Trustee Powell? Thank you for seconding. All in favor, or is anyone opposed? Seeing no one opposed, the motion passes, and the minutes are now approved. Thank you. Moving on to item number six, which we are moving into our action items. The first item that we have, action item, is item number 6.1, which is Policy I-19, Occupational Health and Safety. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the policy committee recommends that Policy I-19, Occupational Health and Safety, be forwarded to the September 17th, 2024 regular board meeting for approval? May I please have a mover?
I can move it.
Trustee Agnew? Trustee Duarte, to second. Thank you. Superintendent Oldman, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Chair, and through you, and good evening, everyone. This evening's annual requirement to review our Occupational Health and Safety Act has been done by appropriate Health and Safety and Human Resource Services staff, and I'm happy to share that we are fully in compliance with the obligations under the Act and that there are only minor housekeeping changes required.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Oldman. Trustees, I will now open the floor to any questions, if you have any. Okay, I don't see any questions. We will now move to a recorded vote of the main motion. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
And trustee Yoboah?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So this item has a majority and will now be forwarded to the September 17th, 2024 regular board meeting. Okay, moving on. Item 6.2, entitled Policy I-28, Electronic Meetings. Trustees, may I please have someone move that the policy committee recommends that Policy I-28, Electronic Meetings, be forwarded to the September 17th, 2024 regular board meeting for approval? May I please have a mover? Trustee Duarte? May I please have a seconder? Trustee Powell, thank you very much. At this time, Director Klein, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Policy I-28, Electronic Meetings, is being brought to the policy committee for review following recent amendments by the province to Ontario Regulation 46397, Electronic Meetings and Meeting Attendance. The regulation establishes new requirements for in-person trustee attendance at board meetings, and this was within the last few months. Updates include a change to the name of the policy so that it aligns better with the new regulation. Requirements have been updated in accordance with the regulation to include new exceptions to in-person presence requirement that apply to trustees. The changes include expanding eligibility for all trustees to attend a regular board meeting electronically. Additional updates to the in-person requirements will take effect in September 1st, 2025. As in many other cases, minor housekeeping changes have been made throughout. And if there are any questions, be more than happy to address them.
Thank you very much, Director Klein. Now we'll now open the floor. If any of our trustees have any questions? Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm wondering about the list of exceptions that I thought I was expecting to see written here of attending the virtual meetings. And the list came to us about beginning, you know, the one you sent? Beginning July 29th, 2024, new exceptions to the physical presence requirement will take effect. And so they list the changes, so I was expecting to see them in here. Is there a reason why they weren't included?
Yeah.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Director Klein, for clarification?
Thank you. Just for clarity's sake, I'm going to bounce this over to Superintendent Bakich.
Thank you for the question, trustee Carabella. Typically, because, as you would have seen with this amendment, they do change it, so we don't typically list every detail. We didn't last time either. This is just to avoid having, if they were to change it again, to have to bring the policy forward, because the policy is applicable to the regulation regardless of the regulation changes. So for reference's sake, if you needed to reference the specific reasons, you could just go into the regulation that's in the policy.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, further clarification?
Well, I guess if there is a change, we'll be notified, right? Because without having to try and check what it is each time. Okay. I have other things, but if another trustee has any...
Thank you, trustee Carabella. I don't see any other trustees with their hand up, so if you have another question.
I do. In the same paragraph, so it says, effective September 1st, 2025, and it talks about these exceptions, and then failure to attend in person as required would result in the trustee's seat being vacated pursuant to clause 228 of the Education Act. So I went to clause 228 of the Education Act, just to make sure, because this, to me, sounds like you miss one meeting and you're out. Like, that's what it sounds like, so I wanted to be clear on it, and maybe we can be clear. Then I went to section 228, and it really just says, fails to be physically present as required by the regulations made under clause, and then a lot of numbers. So, and my recollection is that it's if you miss three meetings in a row without letting the chair know that you won't be there, that that means you vacate your seat automatically. So I wonder if we need to be clear.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Through Director Klein to Superintendent Bakich.
So trustee Carabella, first of all, the language comes right from the amendment and that document that we sent forward after the package was sent. And if you notice, it says, unless one of the exceptions to the requirement for in-person attendance applies. So those exceptions that are listed in the regulation, which are fairly broad, that would provide the reason for absence. What they're saying here is if a trustee is absent, that it's an absence that's unaccounted for, so no communication has been shared with the chair or the designate, no exception has been applied for, et cetera. So it would be almost, you know, trustee who is not present, didn't notify, doesn't show up.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakich. Trustee Carabella, does that clarify? Awesome, thank you. Okay, I see trustee Kennedy, you have your hand up.
Through you, Madam Chair. Just wondering, the requirement regarding the two-day notice, I know that's from the older policy, but just wondering why that's in place? Is there some sort of issue that if, needs to be prepared well in advance if someone, you know, on a Monday morning, which is less than two days, provides notice? Why the requirement for two days?
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Through Director Klein to...
Superintendent Bakich.
Superintendent Bakich.
In terms of its relative to the other policy?
Yes, so that was in place, like you said, trustee Kennedy, from before. We've added in writing, because that is the practice, that trustees provide notice to the chair of the board in writing. The two days, I believe, was established just to provide enough notice, but I can yield to the chair, who may want to get more information.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakich. Chair Duarte?
Thank you. This was there in the policy from day one, but I believe the reason why it was there is to provide enough information to everyone, to notify them that you're not there, in case you are doing something, in case you're doing the opening prayer, for example. Alternate arrangements need to be done. If you are allocated some task in, so you let everybody know that you're not coming to the meeting, you're not able to come. I think that's the reason why it was there, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chair Duarte. Trustee Kennedy? Any follow-up, trustee Kennedy? No, okay. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. My follow-up to that would be, so, because sometimes things happen that day for a family reason, you wouldn't be able to attend. So is that going to be not accepted as an absence?
Trustee Carabella, I will go over to Chair Duarte, but I would think there'd be leniency for unexpected situations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Although the policy, trustee Carabella, has been there, we have always been, you know, open and clear, I mean, acceptable to make it, accept those exceptions to the policy.
Good.
So we never had an issue in the past.
Thank you. Just making sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, do you have another follow-up, or? Okay. Okay, I don't see any other questions from any other trustees. So I will now take it to recorded vote. We will be voting on I-28, Electronic Meetings. I'm going to go the other way this time. Trustee Yoboah?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Powell?
Favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
I am also in favor, so I-28 passes. The policy will be brought forward to September 17th, 2024 regular board meeting. Thank you, everyone. Moving on, we are now on to item 6.3, which is Policy I-36, Trustee Code of Conduct. Trustees, may I please have someone move that the policy committee recommends that Policy I-36, Trustee Code of Conduct, be forwarded to the September 17th, 2024 regular board meeting for approval? May I please have a mover? Trustee Agnew? May I please have a seconder?
Duarte.
Trustee Duarte? Director Klein, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, everyone. Ontario Regulation 24618, Member of School Board's Code of Conduct, has been revoked. This was part of the same July series of shifts that the ministry announced that were not entirely a surprise. And is replaced now with Ontario Regulation 31224, the last digit always shows the year, Members of School Board's Code of Conduct, that sets out a mandatory code of conduct which provides a consistent standard for trustee conduct in all boards throughout the province. The mandatory code of conduct is intended to support effective governance and leadership so boards remain focused on the successful delivery of provincial education priorities. This policy has been amended to reflect those new regulatory requirements, effective August 28th of this year. References have been updated and requirements have been updated to reflect language that is now in accordance with the new regulation. Minor housekeeping changes have been made throughout. The provisions in the Better Schools and Student Outcomes Act, establishing the investigation process resolving trustee code of conduct complaints, will be proclaimed in January 1st of this coming year. It's almost like a phase one and phase two. To support these provisions, Ontario Regulation 30624, Integrity Commissioners, and process for alleged breaches of the code of conduct, will also come into effect January 1st of 2025. Policy I-36, the policy in question, will be returned to the policy committee prior to January 1st for further amendments and review to ensure compliance with the new regulatory requirements of the Ontario Regulation 306. And of course, the policy is here for your review. Beyond the regulations that impact this, trustees are probably aware that OXXTA, which represents Catholic school trustees in Ontario, has sent out at least two memos from the executive director and the president as well, because they were able to get people together to kind of look through this, so there would be some form of alignment among boards in Ontario. So we'd be more than happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustees, I will now open the floor, if anyone has any questions. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. I have a lot of questions going through this policy, so I guess I will just jump actually to the last, just to understand that, the rollout, because I was wondering why we didn't add anything from the 306 regulation. And then also, there's a section from the Regulation 312 that wasn't added as well. So I guess first, the 306, and then I'll point out which part of the 312.
Thank you, trustee Carabella.
I'll start very quickly and then bounce it over to my colleague, Superintendent Bakich. Not only was this last minute, fairly last minute in July, right? And this also has a lot of layers to it. Even though we knew it was coming, there's still lots of layers to it. And I think OXXTA was maybe even taken a little off guard by it as well. Superintendent Bakich, just a tip of my hat to her, spent a good part of the summer digging through this, a lot of conversations, even with OXXTA, trying to get a sense of continuity. And that is unusual, but I think she'll be able to explain why we have this sort of a start, pause, and then restart with regard to the shifts that occur on New Year's Day of 2025.
Thank you, Director Klein. Superintendent Bakich?
Trustee Carabella, so what I've done to begin with is to implement the requirements that are effective for August 28th. The second part for the Integrity Commissioners Act and the honoraria need to be added for effective January 1st, 2025. So really, allowing the policy to come back to policy provides the trustees to consider the two processes. So currently, we have a process embedded in the policy regarding enacting, when there is an issue of a breach, for lack of a better description. And you'll notice that on page, let me go to it. Right, the enforcement of the code of conduct under section 11. So that, if there were a breach to occur between now and December, this would still apply. Effective January 1st, 2025, we need to have the other section, which is the Integrity Commissioners Act, implemented in the code of conduct. However, I'm proposing that for trustees to discuss how they want to implement this informal process to be conducted, because the Integrity Commission Act requires a much more formal process and will have a greater impact on the board of trustees and the board at large. It requires a breach to be referred to the integrity commissioner. It requires financial impact. I would say that it would have board reputational impact. So there are things in place for consideration for the trustees to work on, as this is a governance policy for all of you. But in the meantime, the integrity commissioner component is not applicable should there be a breach between now and January 1st, 2025. The trustee honoraria act will also be implemented for that date. So it will go back to, what the purpose is for this evening is to approve the amendments effective to be in compliance for August 28th, which we have, and then we'll go back to the work table, trustees, to implement the other components.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakich. Thank you very much. Trustee Carabella, follow-up?
Okay, so that's wonderful for three, Regulation 306. Okay, thank you. So, and the part of Regulation 312, number, it's 4.1 and 4.2, why did we not, we've added all the other sections, the one about no board member shall give notice of an alleged breach of the code of conduct under section 218 of the Act if the allegation is frivolous or vexatious, or the notice is given in bad faith. And 4.2, no board member shall engage in reprisal or the threat of reprisal against the member who gave notice, like that section. Why was that not included?
Thank you, trustee Carabella. I think I'll go right over to Superintendent Bakich. So that, those components will be included as we move forward for the application of January 1st, 2025. A few things for the trustees to consider are the definitions of frivolous and vexatious. What I am proposing would be the legal definition, but again, this is all for the work of the trustees to come together in formulating the amendments for the policy. So they do go hand in hand with the new Act, the Integrity Commissioners Act.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakich. Trustee Carabella, there's no one else with their hand up, if you have another question? Okay, keep going. That's fine.
I think I can get a start on it, too. Telephone was, first of all...
Sorry, Director Klein. Trustee Carabella, thank you. I don't know if she was finished yet.
Oh.
Oh, okay. So through you, Director Klein, go ahead.
I jumped on the pause. The, I'll start. I think part of the question was telephone in terms of that, how would that be noted? I think the straight answer is this is something that is a continuity from the last one. I guess it's possible. One could overhear a phone call or whatever, but I think that's, it's continuous from the last iteration of this policy. And I honestly, I'm not sure if I caught the rest of the question. Superintendent Bakich, did you?
Go ahead, Superintendent Bakich.
I can maybe add to that, trustee Carabella. Telephone, I would see that as similar to any kind of conversations that any of the staff have as well. If there were a complaint to come forward, sometimes in a telephone conversation, you know, there's delivery issues, perhaps harsh words or tone, et cetera. It's, if you notice, we've added including but not limited to, so we're trying to really capture the scope of how trustees communicate with stakeholders in various ways.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakich. And even telephone is also text, right? You're using a text, you telephone to text, so all forms of communication appears to be. Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up? And then we have trustee Saunders.
Okay. My follow-up would just be on to clarify that it's board email and board newsletters, right?
Trustee Carabella, over to Director Klein.
I think in the crux of it, I think there's going to be interpretation, but I'm going to defer to Superintendent Bakich and possibly a chair.
Thank you, Director Klein. Chair or superintendent? Who would like to?
I can start.
Superintendent Bakich won the draw.
I'll start and then yield to the chair. It's my understanding in your role as a trustee, so the format of communication that you would use in a role of trustee.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakich. Chair?
Want me to add something? Thank you, Madam Chair. So trustees, we are trustees, we represent the board, so we have to be careful when we respond or send anything out to constituents, ratepayers, anybody in that matter, because we are looked upon differently, because we are elected trustees. So anything that goes out from us as trustees, you need to be extremely careful that it represents the board. You may not represent the chair of the board, who speaks for the board, but as trustees, you are responsible to your ratepayers, who have elected you. So I would say that.
Thank you, Chair Duarte. One follow-up, trustee Carabella, then I got to get to trustee Saunders.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Saunders, thanks for being patient.
Madam Chair, just a quick question. Superintendent Bakich mentioned there would be an opportunity to work on things like definitions. So what mechanism? Will that be in this committee, or will there be another committee struck where we discuss some of the intricacies of the policy that's coming in force in January?
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Superintendent Bakich?
I can start, trustee Saunders. That would be the work of the chair and the vice chair to decide, so I yield to him.
Chair of policy.
Chair of policy.
Okay, so to answer that question, trustee Saunders, we'd be working together as a group to work on that legal definition of, let's say the example was frivolous and vexatious, I wrote it down so I didn't forget, we would work as a working group, whether it was through the board or through policy committee, one of the two, or both. Do you have a follow-up to that? No, thank you. Okay, I don't, so, sorry, trustee Murphy?
Through you, Madam Chair. I don't see it in front of me, but the part that talks about communications, if we could just scroll down to that? Because I think in response to trustee Carabella's question, it seems a bit broad in terms of communication, because some trustees in their regular non-trustee roles may be interacting with people who are part of their community otherwise, but not in that role as a trustee. Does that make sense? Thinking to myself personally, but I mean, other people deal with people in the public all the time, right? So I'm wondering if the word trustee could be added in front of the word communication to delineate that it is related to communication around board business.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. To Director Klein.
I'm looking over at the superintendent and also at the chair as well, because I think there's a bit of an interpretation on that, so I'm going to defer to the chair.
Or if we're talking about communications, maybe to the communications? Plus she had her hand up, so.
Oh, I didn't see that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had, I don't know if we can, oh yeah, you've pulled it up. So I think because that particular paragraph, again, this has been in here for a while, but because that paragraph, trustee Murphy... but because that paragraph, Trustee Murphy begins with in performing their duties as trustees, I think it's implicit in, I think that takes care of your concern.
Everyone agrees that that takes care of the concern. That was, I just thought maybe just to like tighten it up, but I'm okay with that.
Thank you, Ms. Swenden. Trustee Murphy, do you have a follow up?
Do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Carabella.
Okay, thank you. So this is on page 7 of 11, under upholding decisions. So as I'm reading this, I know, you know, when when a decision is made at the board table, obviously, it is implemented and we uphold it. But as we know, voting records are varied. Sometimes it's a close majority, sometimes it's unanimous. So in instances when it's it's not unanimous, you know, we can understand that trustees, individual trustees have individual opinions about decisions that have happened at the board table. So I found that under there, it didn't leave any room for like free speech that maybe to consider is is adding some bullet that says, you know, that trustees, what did I have here, like trustees can hold individual opinions on matters related to the board. We're not speaking on behalf of the board, but each each of us have our individual opinions and ideas. I just found there wasn't a room there to show that we do have free speech.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. To Director Klein.
Thank you. I don't see within that, just a matter of fact here, that anything really has changed over the last policies as they've been iterated over, I think, several years. I'm going to look at Superintendent Bickeich here in terms of that. I do know that when it comes to training, we've all done in governance, is that when these decisions are made, these decisions are made, this is the decision of the board, right? And we are, we are the board and beyond that, then those are upheld. So Superintendent Bickeich?
Thank you for the question, Trustee Carabella. The the language, Director Klein is is correct in that the language has not changed. It's embedded in the Act. If you look on the in the first section under, on page 2, specific requirements under Part 6 of the Act, and then also now the Reg requiring trustees to be, I'm going to say compliant with the board's decisions. Also, in terms of free speech, I look at the Reg 31224 on this on the third page that has been added. And really, I mean, if it's when acting number two or holding themselves out as a board member, the member shall conduct themselves in a manner that would not discredit or compromise the integrity of the board. So in the scope of that, I would presume that a trustee would not make a comment that would that would go against that that language. I I think it would be very difficult, in my opinion, and I'll yield to the chair again, is I don't know how you would limit or, I mean, people are entitled to their opinion, but in the role, from what my understanding is from having gone through a lot of this language repeatedly, in the role of the trustee, there are requirements of the role and of the conduct. And I think that's that's what it's encapsulated in this in this policy. The language is compliant and in alignment with the Act and this regulation.
Thank you, Superintendent Bickeich. Chair Dwight, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Section 218.1, subsection E is very clear, this words, exact words and act. And when a decision is made by the Board of Trustees, it's a one decision, not multiple decisions. That's the reason why it's there. And I think it's very important to 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 uphold the decision of the board. We may have various opinions, but at the end of the day, it's the collective of the board that that persists. So the wording is exactly from the Act.
Thank you, Chair Dwight. With Director Klein's blessing, Ms. Swenden would like to speak to this.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I think, Trustee Carabella, I think your concern may be addressed on page 20 of this report, of the full report, so maybe page 6 of this policy, Claudia. And it was, Trustee Dwight just mentioned, or the chair of the board just mentioned, Section 218. If you look at that first full bullet, it says, subject to the duty of a trustee under Section 218.1E of the Education Act, a trustee may comment on or disagree with a decision taken by the board. A trustee shall not make disparaging or demeaning remarks. So there you have your freedom of speech that you're referring to, but with the limitations that you can, you may not. Okay, so I think that's what you were.
Thank you, Ms. Swenden. Trustee Carabella?
That's good, thank you.
Good. How's your list going, Trustee Carabella?
I do have, may I?
Of course, go ahead.
So page 10 of 11. I'm not going to do all my points, so I'm not vexatious. But this one, so this is page 10 of 11. Okay, this is number three, and it says, a trustee who is subject to a board inquiry to determine whether the trustee has breached the Code of Conduct has a right to retain and be represented by legal counsel throughout the process. Legal expenses will not be paid. So I'm just wondering with that, because the person who who is alleging the breach and has has maybe had legal advice on that, is that, is their legal, do they get their legal expenses paid and get use of board expenses or board, board lawyers to have help in preparing the alleged breach against the trustee?
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. So I think I understand the question. So say there was a breach against me, I could retain a lawyer, but I'd have to pay for it out of my pocket, but the board would have to investigate that Code of Conduct, and that's paid by the board, I believe. But I'm going to have to defer to the chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Trustee Carabella. So the trustee who's bringing the allegation does not get paid any legal reimbursement. But the board will, has a duty to deal with any item that comes to the board. That is paid by the board. But the trustee who's bringing the allegation does not get reimbursed for anything, nor does the trustee who's alleged against get paid. So that's individual.
So Chair Dwight, I need clarification what you just said there. So if if I bring a Code of Conduct against somebody, the board, if there was legal expenses to be paid, the board would pay that?
Yes, if the board takes it in hand and then follows up, that's the legal expense of the board.
Yeah, I just wanted, I figured that's how it worked. And then if the person that's been alleged a breach of conduct and they want a legal counsel, they have to pay for it out of their own, okay. Trustee Carabella, follow up?
Yeah, I'm glad that's clarified. I find it unfair in a sense because, well, that's because obviously they can get get help through lawyers. Okay, the other one, I have one more, and it's the same page, V11. A trustee who is alleged to have breached this Code of Conduct shall not vote on any of the resolutions listed above, which had to deal with voting on whether they have been alleged to have breached or not. So is this, where does this come from, where where that person is not allowed to vote and yet the person who brings the accusation or the alleged accusation is allowed to vote? So if we're talking about being fair, you know, in a way, the votes cancel themselves out and it's fair because, you know, we can imagine you would vote one way and the other person would vote the other way. So the person who has breached, who's allegedly breached the Code of Conduct is at a disadvantage already starting. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. So I'm just going to try and tell me if I'm wrong, through Director Klein or Superintendent Bickeich, this point form, is that coming from a regulation? Okay, so that's not something that was created, it's coming from a regulation.
Sorry, if you look at just below number 11, where it says enforcement of the code in accordance with the provisions of Section 218.3 of the Education Act, and then what follows is in accordance with that.
Thank you, Superintendent Bickeich. So, okay, so you've clarified where that came from, 218. Okay, thank you, Superintendent Bickeich. Trustee Carabella? Thank you. Thank you. Good questions. Okay, we're going to move on now. So we are now going to move to a recorded vote of the main motion of Policy I-36. Okay, Trustee Dwight?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee Yaboa?
In favor.
I am also in favor, so the motion does pass, and this policy will be brought forward to the September 17th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting. Okay, so we are now on Action Item 6.4, which is the Policy I-43, Use of Technology and Digital Citizenship. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy I-43 be forwarded along with the amendments to the September 17th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting for approval? I'm looking for a mover?
Dwight.
I think Trustee Powell beat you. Trustee Dwight, second it, Dwight? Trustee Dwight?
Sure.
Okay, Superintendent Bickeich, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Trustees will remember that we did bring the policy forward at the June 11th Policy Committee meeting with the recommendation that it be referred for stakeholder feedback. And as per the Ministry's updated directive, PPM 128, we have included the feedback, stakeholder feedback in Appendix A, and also the feedback that we received for the associated procedure, VI 62. We did make some minor additional amendments to the definitions to improve, so that there's less confusion. We removed the references to BYOD, that's Bring Your Own Device, and also we added the personal mobile device definition as per the Ministry's definition, which is in the footnotes of PPM 128. Just some clarifying language as well, under the requirements on page, direct you to that. So it's clear, on page 6, I added students in kindergarten to grade 12 are not permitted the use of personal mobile devices as opposed to just the bullet of are not permitted. And also the language regarding the educator's responsibilities of not to use personal mobile devices during instructional time unless explicitly for work-related purposes. Those same amendments, the same language are present in VI 62 as well. And just an update for trustees regarding the procedure. The procedure was approved at our senior admin meeting on August, I believe, 26th. It has been reviewed with administrators at their August meeting and also with all staff at the September 3rd PA Day. It has also been reviewed with all students. Communication went out, I'm sure you probably saw it, especially as student trustees to the student body, parents' community, thanks to Andrea Swenden's Department of Communications, we did get the message out via the directors' updates as well. So all in all, the information, the requirements have all been implemented, and I'm happy to say that we did get some positive feedback already, and it's only been a week, not just from staff, that's important, but we also heard from some students in secondary, and their comment was, one of actually surprise, that the kids were talking to each other because they had deposited their cell phones before entry and they were actually talking, which is really nice to hear. One other anecdote that maybe parents may or may not be happy to hear, but there were less students going out to vape because they couldn't talk to each other using their phones. So that's a positive as well. So I'm happy to say, even feedback from my fellow family schools colleagues, that the schools are doing a great job in implementing the requirements. And I think that because of the really thorough and tremendous amount of communication that has come out from the board, but also in the media, students were well aware and parents were well aware of what was coming in addition to the work that we did in June. So happy to take any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Bickeich. Trustees, I will now open the floor if anyone has any questions. No, okay, seeing none. We will now, oh, Trustee Carabella, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering to understand about, could you explain to me about the platforms that are now we control or we, the kids can't access platforms? So I was just reading one of the comments that we received from from the survey that we did that talked about students maybe bypassing the security features of the Wi-Fi networks and how are we aware of that or is that going on or is there a way to also stop that? And this particular comment was that perhaps it's not on the device, but they can do things with their laptops. Did you see that one? Yeah, just to, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Superintendent Bickeich?
Yeah, thank you, Trustee Carabella. That's a good question. It's not so much on their laptops, but on their additional devices like smartwatches, et cetera. The point, though, of the cell phones being silenced or turned off and away really contributes to them not accessing that information. Now, I'm going to give you my, what I've learned, and we all know that where there's a will, there's a way eventually, but all the necessary blocks have been put in place. There is a process for educators to get approval to use certain platforms because we do use do use platforms like YouTube, et cetera, for educational purposes, but they're now required to seek exception through IT. And it only is for a term of one year, so it's going to be constantly reviewed. And and again, you know, we do have processes in place to remind students, there will be a progressive discipline model applied if if there is an infraction. But as a reminder to trustees, we have had this process in place. It's a lot more sophisticated now by way of social media blocks, which I'm sure that student trustees might want to attribute to, you know, to the success of IT. Yay, go IT. But so we are making every effort, and I think as a board, we've we've done a lot of work, and I want to, I want to really laud Superintendent Lott's department, Bill Crips, they had to do a lot in a very short period of time. So so they're working at it, and I think that, and Andrea can probably lend some more information, but the limitations themselves and the use of the cell phones being silenced or turned off really contributes to seeing through the limitations of social media use.
Thank you, Superintendent Bickeich. Trustee Carabella, do you have any follow up? Okay. Okay, we will put this to a vote. We will be voting on I-43. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Dwight?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Yaboa?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Majority, everyone, it passes I-43. The policy will be brought forward to the September 17th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so we're going to move on, and we're moving on to 6.5, which is Policy II-39, Progressive Discipline and Safety in Schools. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy II-39, Progressive Discipline and Safety in Schools be forwarded to the September 17th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting for approval? 17, 2024 regular board meeting for approval? May I please have a mover? Trustee Agnew, thank you, may I please have a seconder?
Dwork.
Trustee Dwork, thank you. Superintendent Cordero, you now have the floor.
Yeah, so through you, Madam Chair, to the Board of Trustees. Paul, the policy for progressive discipline in our schools has undertaken a number of changes to reflect the mandate of the Ministry of Education with respect to changes to the policy on bullying prevention intervention, as well as changes made with respect to the use of cellphones in the school setting, and the occasions in which students are found to be vaping in the school environment. So those changes are specific to government PPMs, to discussions had at the Policy Committee, or the subcommittee, with led by Superintendent Bakich and the senior admin team, to reflect the current reality and the mandates of the province of Ontario when it comes to cellphone use, the cause in which students are vaping in our schools, and the current definitions with respect to bullying, and what those behaviors look like in our schools, and how school and senior admin are asked to address those concerns, both from an intervention perspective, but also in terms of progressive discipline and an educational piece always as a content to support any measure that rises to the level of suspension or any other decision along that progressive discipline continuum. So those are the changes. We are seeking support and understanding from the community to have stakeholder feedback, and we're hoping to move forward with this revised policy at the earliest possible date, so that we can continue to do our very best to ensure the safety and wellbeing of our students, and the commitment that we make to our families. If there are any questions, I would certainly welcome.
Thank you Superintendent Cordero. I will now open the floor, if any of our trustees have any questions or clarifications required? No, okay. You sure? Okay, seeing no questions, we will now take it to, oh, Superintendent Bakich.
Okay, I just wanted to add and perhaps clarify Superintendent Cordero's point that once approved, this policy, as per the requirements of the PPM 128, would go out for stakeholder feedback.
Thank you very much for clarifying that Superintendent Bakich. Okay, so we're going to put II-39, Progressive Discipline and Safety in Schools, to a vote. I'm going to start with trustee Yaboah.
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
I am also in favor. It passes, the motion passes, so this policy will be brought forward to the September 17, 2024 regular board meeting. Sorry, correction Superintendent Bakich? Oh, sorry, my apologies, let me just pretend you didn't hear that. This policy will now vote for stakeholder feedback, thank you. Okay, I'm just going to make a note here, that this will not go to the board, it's going to go to stakeholder feedback first. Thank you for correcting me. Thank you for scaffolding me. Okay, item 6.6, policy...
Point of clarification?
Yes ma'am.
Excuse me for a moment, can I just ask why this is going out for stakeholder feedback?
I was thinking the same, I was wanting, I was going to tip it to Superintendent Bakich, and I'll still do that, first of all, for all, a lot of us, audience possibly, but also we have new members here too, and it's important to know why we do this, sometimes why we don't. Often, if it's a brand new one, because sometimes through regulation or others, we have a brand new policy, you would do that, but in this case, that's not the case, so Superintendent Bakich?
So thank you Director Klein, so thank you for the question trustee Powell, over to you Superintendent Bakich.
Thanks for the question, you're right, it's, it's within the PPM requirement, PPM 128 requires that school boards seek input from stakeholders on these updated amendments. Yeah, so the amendments that you see there are specific to the PPM, and we have a very robust policy, as you can see. So it was, it was reviewed, I think it was 2022 we had it there, so it has come out of cycle due to the amendments to PPM 128, and it's typically, we wouldn't, because it's specific amendments, to be aligned and compliance with PPM 128, but it's a requirement of the PPM.
Thank you Superintendent Bakich, trustee Powell?
So you're right, it's not the, it's not the typical process, it's just because it is, it's embedded within the PPM.
And good question, because those watching may have the same question, so thank you for bringing it forward.
Well trustee Carabella had the same question, but I think she's...
Thank you. She gets extra candy.
It's a real love fest here today. Okay, so let's move on to item 6.6, policy III-15, Workplace Violence. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that policy III-15, Workplace Violence, be forwarded to the September 17, 2024, 2024 regular board meeting for approval? May I please have a mover? Trustee Powell, may I please have a seconder?
Carabella.
Trustee Carabella, thank you very much. Superintendent Oldman, you now have the floor.
Thank you again, and through you Madam Chair, again, per our statutory obligations under the Occupational Health and Safety Act, and, and at broader at large, this policy regarding workplace violence has been reviewed by appropriate HR services and health and safety staff, and I'm happy to report that aside from minor housekeeping changes, it is compliant to the legislation as it reads.
Thank you so much Superintendent Oldman. Trustees, I will now open the floor, if anyone has any questions or any clarification required? Seeing none? We will take this to a recorded vote of the main motion. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Yaboah?
In favor.
I am also in favor, so this policy passes. We have a majority, the policy will be brought forward to the September 17, 2024 regular board meeting. Thank you. We are now moving on to item 6.7, policy III-16, Workplace Violence. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that policy III-16, Workplace Violence, be forwarded to the September 17, 2024 regular board meeting for approval? May I please have a mover? Trustee? Trustee Agnew, did I have a seconder? Trustee Powell, thank you. Superintendent Oldman, you now have the floor.
Thank you Chair, and through you. This policy is related to workplace discrimination and harassment, and again, there are statutory obligations for us to have a policy such as, as this in play, both under the Occupational Health and Safety Act, and under the Ontario Human Rights Code. So, that being said, this has been reviewed to ensure that we are able to meet and adhere to those requirements. Aside from, again, minor housekeeping changes, there was some clarification regarding confidentiality throughout the investigatory process that had been accounted for, which had really been largely in practice, so we just wanted to account for that, to respect the integral component and investigatory process that ensues when and if an allegation is, is brought forward.
Thank you Superintendent Oldman. Trustees, I will now open the floor, if anyone has any questions or clarify required, clarification required? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so we will now move on and take it to a recorded vote of the main motion. Where shall I start? Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Powell?
Favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Yaboah?
In favor.
I am also in favor, so the policy, we have a majority, it passes, the policy will be brought forward to the September 17, 2024 regular board meeting. Thank you everybody, and I just want to say, on record, I really want to thank you Director Klein to Superintendent Bakich, there was a lot of work done behind the scenes to make this organized, so I know you're a humble individual, but I just really want to thank you, there was a lot of work done through the summer, so thank you for getting this organized, every day you amaze me. So, let's move on, item number seven, discussion items, there are no discussion items. Item number eight, so items 8.1 to 8.7 are administrative procedures provided for your information, but these were already approved at the August 26 and September 3, 2024 senior administrative meetings. Item 8.8, Policy Summary Report, provides an overview of the policies that were reviewed last term, 2023 to 2024, within the Policy Committee and up till June 11, 2024. Item 8.9 is the 2024-2025 Policy Committee Work Plan. It does provide us all an overview of the policies, they're on the docket for this year's Policy Committee meetings. Item 8.10 provides an illustrative example of the steps involved in HCDSP's policy review cycle, so it tells us when we go out for feedback, when we don't, if we needed two-thirds, if we need a majority, that kind of thing. And item 8.11 are the agenda items for the next Policy Committee meeting, which will be coming live on October 10, 2024. Item nine, miscellaneous information, there was no miscellaneous information, was anything added that I'm aware of, I don't think there's anything miscellaneous. Correspondence, we did not have any correspondence, there was no in-camera agenda this evening. Item number 11, so we're going to move to item 12. We have no trustees that were absent, everybody was here and really worked hard. Item number 13, which is a German and closing prayer, may I please have a motion to adjourn? May I please have a mover? Trustee Saunders, may I please have a seconder? Or trustee Carabella? All in favor, is anyone opposed? Seeing none? Thank you, we will now end the meeting with a closing prayer by trustee Dwork.
Thank you Madam Chair, please join me in the sign of the feet, in the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Heavenly Father, we thank you for giving us the strength and grace to begin this new school year in a safe and orderly manner. We thank you for blessing and protecting our staff who are entrusted to educate our students. We thank you for all the gifts that you have given us, and ask you to place your mantle of protection over all our families throughout the school year. This we pray in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, amen. In the Father, Son, Holy Spirit.
Thank you everyone, be safe, have a good night, and a good week ahead.